Good morning, everyone. We are live again for the first time, I guess. Want to welcome everyone to the January 7th Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, we'll call this meeting to order and I will begin with a word of prayer. If y'all will pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings and opportunities that you provide us each and every day. Special blessing on this board as well as other boards throughout the state and country as they make, as the leadership makes decisions for their constituents, as you provide them the guidance needed to make those that are needed for their respective communities. Be with those that are in our hearts and our minds, also with the Oster family as they pay their condolences to Mr. Oster who passed away this past weekend. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I have public comments. Presentation of National Awards to Rankin County for Payment Preservation. Did I get that right? Preservation, I think, is the right word? Is it a preservation?
Yes, sir, you did. Gentlemen, I rise before you today to introduce you guys to something that is exciting to talk about, something that is encouraging to hear, and we are really excited to draw attention and good and positive attention to the work of our road department. Mike Harrison, our road manager, and his guys that work closely with him in the road department have been given two national awards that are, and we're going to tell you a little bit more about these as we go forward, but he's been, his department has been given two national awards recognizing their work in pavement preservation. And we wanted to come today and bring before you the folks that are directly responsible for those awards and sort of to set the stage for you. I'm here to let you know that it's an exciting time in Rankin County for us to be able to talk about this. At the end of the day, what this is really about is recognition of the work of our road department to preserve the limited resources that we all know that we deal with and get the best bang for the buck. And whenever we can get national recognition for that, we want to bring that to your attention and we want to try to shout that from the rooftops and broadcast that as far and as wide as we can. It's exciting. And so I'm going to bring up first, come on, road manager, Mike Harrison, our road manager's going to come join me. Miss Amy Walker with Ergon. She is the area sales manager for Ergon. Larry Tompkins, if you'll come forward, please. Larry serves as the vice president in the sales area for Ergon, and we have these folks with us today. And we're going to walk you guys through a quick presentation. And what you see here are the names of the two awards that have been provided to Rankin County, the 2019 ISSA Excellence in Payment Preservation Award and the 2019 AEMA Past Presidents' Award for Emulsion Excellence. And so those are the two awards that we're highlighting. And Rankin County, Mississippi, is the first county or municipality in the state of Mississippi to be awarded any recognition like this, but specifically these two awards. And so we definitely want to highlight that. These are national awards. And so all across the country, our road department is being singled out for recognition. And I'm going to ask Larry Tompkins to come and to tell you guys a little bit more about those awards, and then we'll have more to say after that.
Sure. Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks, Craig. My name is Larry Tompkins. I work with Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions. And I know that on that previous slide, real quick, that's actually my subdivision. So I actually live in Palisades. So I got to experience it this year on all these projects. So I wanted to tell you guys a little bit about these two awards and the associations that they come from. The first one is the International Slurry Surfacing Association. It's a nonprofit association dedicated to the interests, education, and success of pavement preservation treatments such as slurry and micro-surfacing, chip sealing, and crack treatments. ISA is made up of contractors, suppliers, laboratories, and agencies from all over the world. The ISA Award for Excellence in Pavement Preservation was established in 2015 and first awarded in 2016 to recognize and honor public officials, engineering firms, or agencies that have made outstanding contributions to the pavement preservation industry. The award is presented to an owner, agency, or engineering firm that has been a champion in the promotion, use, and success of pavement preservation applications that are represented by the association. The 2019 Excellence in Pavement Preservation Award has been awarded to Rankin County, Mississippi. Congratulations. The next one is the Asphalt Emulsions Manufacturers Association, which is EMA, is a proactive organization dedicated to the advancement of the asphalt emulsion industry, constantly focusing on system preservation and the construction of the world's infrastructure. The Asphalt Emulsion Manufacturers Association's Past Presidents' Award for Emulsion Excellence is presented in recognition of a specific project or projects utilizing asphalt emulsions completed in the past calendar year. This award is presented to the agency, the contractor, and the emulsion manufacturer for the winning entry. The 2019 Past Presidents' Award for Emulsion Excellence has been awarded to Rankin County, Mississippi, T.L. Wallace, and Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions for the projects that were constructed this year in Rankin County utilizing asphalt emulsions. So congrats to Mike, his staff, to all you guys for this recognition. Really a privilege for me to stand up here as a Rankin County resident to announce these awards on behalf of Ergon Asphalt Emulsions. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Gentlemen, real quickly, we're going to move to the next slide. I want to help you guys understand and set the stage. And Mike's going to come up here in just a second and tell you just a little bit more specific about what was done. But the road department received these awards, as you can see, because of their work alongside the work of our vendors who help us so consistently. And Mike was able then to take some roads that were in need of some attention and employ these economically efficient methods to prolong the life of these roads. And that's what this is about. It's taking limited resources and then utilizing the most recent technology and listening closely and working closely with our vendors to know what are the most economically efficient methods that we can stretch the life of our infrastructure. And that's what we've been able to do. And so this is Wendy Polk. She is the marketing manager for Ergon, and she's helping run this slideshow for us. Thank you, Wendy, for helping us today putting it together. This slide is important because it's sort of a bottom-line slide. And I wanted to walk you guys through this. You've already heard about this before, but I want to make sure that there's a good, clear understanding. The road department was able to pay attention to and get to in excess of 100 miles of road in the last fiscal year. And when they did that, they employed multiple ways of addressing the condition of the road, most of which on the 100 miles would be these activities that we're telling you about today. So we employ these economically efficient. What is the bottom-line result of using the efficient methods that we have now at our disposal? If we had employed traditional road rehabilitation services on these 100 miles of roads, we would expect the total cost to be in the neighborhood of $12 million. Because we were able to utilize these efficient methods that have allowed us to prolong the life, we actually spent $4.7 million on the same miles. That savings resulted to the taxpayers is, as you can see, $7.3 million. We think that's something that we ought to talk about and get excited about. And we think that our constituency needs to know that the supervisors and the employees of Rankin County are looking for ways to stretch their tax dollars as far as we can absolutely take them. Mike Harrison, come up here. I want Mike to take over here and tell you guys a little bit about how they did what they did.
Thank you, Craig. I would like to start by thanking the board for giving us this opportunity and giving us a chance to go down this road and look at these pavement preservations. And with the help of our vendors, I think we was successful at it. We started in '16 with 30 miles of chip seal road. We implemented fog seal in that to lock our aggregate down. We seen that was working. So from there, we went to some more classes, asphalt and emulsion classes. We moved into micro in 2017. Did some roads that worked out good. Then we moved on and started doing some different stuff. We went into '18 with a different outlook. Went into some scrub seals, some cape seals, modified chip seals, and some rejuvenating asphalt, emulsions, excuse me, with some high polymer micro surface. And from there, we got, we ended up with two miles of cape seal and rejuvenate scrub seal and the highly modified and six miles of cape seal with a chip seal and micro combo. Six miles of cape seal, rejuvenate scrub seal, micro on that, and then 30 miles of standalone micro. And then we went 55 miles of chip seal. We also fog sealed in that. And it's, hopefully, it's going to extend our life six to 10 years. And I think we got some clips of some different subdivisions here of roads. We got Clear Road right there was done in the triangle right there, and West Main back toward the city limits, and then Clear Road back toward White Road, toward State Aid Road right there. And then we got Palisades subdivision right here that was a micro surface. And we got a chip seal and a micro in Live Oaks. And we got a scrub seal and micro in Old Dominion Parkway. And Barnett Bend, we got scrub and the micro. And then this is Old Brandon with the scrub and the eFlex right here.
All right, thank y'all.
The conclusion on this, guys, is you saw, and you may have seen, that each district was represented in this process. We've done everything that we can to make sure that we employ these methods all over the county. And what we're finding is that they are effective all over the county. And so the intention will be to continue to employ these efficient methods and stretch those tax dollars everywhere there is road in Rankin County that needs to be preserved or life extended. The conclusion, obviously, is, and I think Mike said it best, it's our goal to utilize practices that allow us to extend our budget and make the most effective use of taxpayer dollars. I couldn't say it any better myself. And anytime that we can get a recognition at the national level and bring that home to Rankin County, we think it ought to be talked about. So thank y'all for giving us an opportunity to express our appreciation to our road crew and to our vendors for all that they helped us to accomplish in 2018. And we look forward to continuing that even farther and winning additional awards as we move forward. And I think we ought to give Mike and the crew a round of applause for winning both of these awards for Rankin County. Guys, I want for y'all to come down. We want to get a photograph with Mike and with our friends from Ergon. Y'all come on down. Let's get a photo of that, and we'll make sure we preserve this case.
Photoshop, Jim.
Excellent.
Y'all heard enough from this. Y'all heard enough.
Yeah, you need to be in the middle, huh?
Larry, you don't want your team to be right there in the middle, too.
Y'all ready? One, two, three.
Guys, we have a press release that we are sending out. We have copies available
comment, Mrs. Chanis? I'll entertain a motion for minutes for December 14th.
for anybody that needs one that's here today. And we'll make sure other members of the media get the press release that we're not able to join today.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All
Amy, if you have anything to say now, you're welcome.
opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Set agenda. So moved by Mr. Cross. Second, Mr. Morrison.
Y'all hear enough from me. I figured I'd bring bigger people to speak.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Sullivan. Good morning, sir.
Morning. How are y'all?
Good.
Item B, petitions change the assessment of 2018 real and personal property assessment.
So moved.
Second. Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Sullivan.
And item B, request to void the 2015 to 2018 tax sales and refund tax sale purchase served for PIN number 69107. The property was seized by the federal government in 2015 but didn't file the paperwork till 2018. And we did what we had to do.
Yeah, I make a motion approve.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Ms. Bridget.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm requesting approval this morning to award bids for the unit system for the traffic safety application, soil stabilization, polyurethane foam application, and asphalt leveling and patching for the bids open December 3rd. You have the recommendations in your package.
I make a motion, second.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Bridget.
The next item is I'm requesting authority to advertise bids for one or more single-axle dump trucks and a new roof for the Human Services building.
I make a motion to advertise.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Sullivan. Good morning, sir.
Morning. How are y'all?
Good.
Item B, petition to change the assessment of 2018 real and personal property assessment.
So moved.
Second. Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Sullivan.
And item B, request to void the 2015 to 2018 tax sales and refund tax sale purchase served for PIN number 69107. The property was seized by the federal government in 2015 but didn't file the paperwork till 2018. And we did what we had to do.
Yeah, I make a motion approve.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Ms. Bridget.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm requesting approval this morning to award bids for the unit system for the traffic safety application, soil stabilization, polyurethane foam application, and asphalt leveling and patching for the bids open December 3rd. You have the recommendations in your package.
I make a motion, second.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Bridget.
The next item is I'm requesting authority to advertise bids for one or more single-axle dump trucks and a new roof for the Human Services building.
I make a motion to advertise.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Do we say how many on the truck? It just says one or more. I mean, more.
We don't. Just wait to see what the bids come in at.
Okay. All right, Mr. Harris is not here. Mr. Slay, you going to do that?
Well, I'll be glad.
I make a motion approve. Work accomplished.
Motion on number A by Mr. Morrison, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. B, Mr. Slay.
Yes, sir. It looks like items B, C, D, E, and F are all requests for utility permits. I know that in the past few meetings, we've divided those out and taken them separately.
Yeah, I want to speak on that just a second if I can, Mr. Slay. We met last week, and I don't remember which day it was, it kind of runs together. We met with AT&amp;T and C Spire in regards to putting this fiber down and putting it in place. And we feel like we've now come to the right agreement, I guess is the best word to say, on the process in which this is going to take place and which we're going to be able to put this fiber stuff down. They're now on the same page with the county. So we feel like moving from this point forward, we should be on the same page. If we're not, they do understand that we're going to stop and audible out of that. But we had a productive meeting last week with C Spire and AT&amp;T, and I believe we're on the same page. They're on the same page with Mike, Craig, and Tim in regards to how we want this put down, how it's installed, and how it should go down. The problem we had, remember, was that they were getting outside of what they requested to be able to do. They'd give us a permit, we want to put cable in these certain places, and not following through with it. Now, we understand that if a permit's going to be changed, wherever they tell us they're putting it, needs to go. So I think that's where we're at.
Yes, that's right.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve B through F.
Daniel, can I, just for the purpose of the record, if I may suggest, let me state where these permits are so that you guys are clued in to where this work activity is likely to be. I think we would do well to know which, if they're going like into a platted subdivision, I want you guys to know so that you're able to deal with residents. So in item B, you'll see that they are asking, AT&amp;T is asking to construct fiber optic at Tricken Bridge between Stratford and North Brandon Boulevard. That's probably going to impact North Brandon Estates. We want to draw that to your attention. And then you see the roads that are listed there, guys. Just pay attention to that. So that's item B. Item C is fiber optic for AT&amp;T, and it will be at the Carter Creek Lane, Kane Creek Rock, I think that's Kane Creek Road, Goshen Lane, Harbor Place, Harbor Lane. That's getting into some subdivision areas right there. So pay attention to that. Item D is C Spire fiber optic, Winter Circle in Jack's Place. Okay? Item E is C Spire fiber optic. It's between, it's on Old Fannin between Jack's Place and Eagle Drive. And then item F is C Spire fiber optic within Oak Grove subdivision. We'll try to make sure Jay is aware of that as well. And it involves Vernon Jones and Old Fannin. So with that, those are items B through F.
Motion by Mr. Cross to approve. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. F, please, sir. No, I'm sorry.
Can I ask?
Public hearing.
Can I ask a question on, just for, when we start getting the calls of putting this down, what's this? These lines are going to be fiber optic to replace old landlines or whatever. And they should have better service, whether they have a phone or a computer. I mean, this should be quicker, faster.
Yes, sir. It is marketed as significantly faster data transmission specifically, but it also impacts phone and television as well. So it's primarily, it's internet-driven, but it's for all of those.
And one other thing on that also is that C Spire has not been in the area. So now, before, all it has is AT&amp;T. And these spots, C Spire is a new service that's adding additional fiber for their service out there. So now...
A competitor.
Right. It gives a choice, I guess.
Thank you.
And now's as good a time as any to remind all of us that these utility providers are common utility providers at the federal level. They are provided a federal mandate to access public right-of-way. They don't have to, they don't have to pay for that right. And so the limitations that are on them are fairly restricted. But at the local level, we can make sure that they place it where we can find it or know that it's located. So we put that restriction on them. And we also require them to be at a requisite depth. So they can't just go in there and lay it two inches deep and walk off. So we have both depth and location issues. They also have to provide us with what we call red lines. It's a document after the fact that establishes this is where the infrastructure was installed so that we can incorporate that into our data. And that way, when we send crews out, we know what we're about to dig up if we are. So just so y'all understand that that's the interplay that we have between these utility providers and the county. Mr. President, you ready for me to move my section?
Everybody done here?
Yes.
All right, let's move on then, please, sir.
Mr. President, if we may, items A through E are to set public hearings for the same day, January 15th at 9:00 a.m. You can see those listed there. I'd ask for one motion to set those hearings, please.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Item F, gentlemen, this is responsive to a request from the coroner that we allow for an unclaimed body to be cremated at the cost of the county. We have an indigent burial policy that was adopted by a predecessor board to this board. We allow for a maximum of $450 to pay for that cost, and that's what this request is associated with.
Right. Make a motion approve.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Martin, you're in place for Ms. Oster. Be back in a minute.
Good morning.
Hey, we may have a problem on this one.
You have anything, Marlon? Coffee?
No, I think I'm getting on the coffee side.
No problem.
Because I can't vote for it. We have to skip A. Hey, we got to skip A.
Okay. All right.
We're going to have to. Unless we can deal with two votes.
Okay.
I'm related to him. I can't vote for him.
Yeah, he's related to you.
Yeah, we have to skip A. We have to skip A. Because I can't vote for him because I'm related to him. Well, it's just kind of a small technicality. My first cousin's married his son. But just a small, small...
Family reunion.
I know. Well, I don't go. They sent me a T-shirt, so I felt like I was counting.
All right, moving on then. All right, Ms. Martin, next.
Okay, moving on to item B. New Rankin County misdemeanor facility approval of pay application number 11 to Flagstar Construction Company in the amount of $289,301.60 and authority to issue the check. Flagstar has also requested seven days to be added to their contract due to weather issues and delays.
Motion to approve by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. See, please, ma'am.
New Rankin County courthouse facilities approval of pay application number 18 to Chris Allbritton Construction Company in the amount of $478,671.72. Authority to issue the check. Chris Allbritton has also requested six additional days due to the adverse weather conditions.
Motion by myself.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, please, ma'am.
Authority to reimburse sheriff's department for the drug funds spent through Haida in the amount of $3,225.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, please, ma'am.
Okay. And we'd like to acknowledge the receipt of the bids received for the Rankin County depository for the term of two years, 2019 to 2021. And we'll open them at this time. We've received a bid from Bank Plus. They have agreed to pay interest at a fixed rate of 2.78% annually.
They've also provided us with a schedule of fees.
Like, don't need a sharp knife. Larry, you can't help them there.
Okay. And we've received a bid from Trust Mart National Bank with an annual fixed interest rate of 1.25%. And they also have a list of recommended fees. And at this time, we'd like to recommend we take these bids under advisement.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Anything for additional business or anything else, Ms. Martin, in your area?
I don't believe so. Thank you.
Anything for additional business, Mr. Gaines?
Our judge magistrate or whatever he's called, it was over a waste management that helped negotiate.
Hearing officer.
Hearing officer.
Right.
Is moving on. And that is vacant. I would like for us to do some type of advertisement, something to let people know that we're looking to replace that person and then move pretty quickly on choosing somebody. And it's just see if we can get the wheels moving to get a solicitation or something out there that lets people know that that position's open.
I think you got to hear your companion up.
Yeah. Well, actually, the court attorney is prohibited from serving as the next manager here.
I know you got a one coming up.
Can we state, just from the standpoint of getting complete information from the folks that have something to do with that, I'd like to talk to Ms. Judy, our tax violator. She's over waste management.
Yep.
And see if she has already begun talking about that. To your point, she, I don't know if in the past, that's a service-related type of deal, so you don't have to do proposals. And I think it's probably a good idea to open it up for proposals. But I'd like to find out, before we get too far, what discussions has she had to find somebody that could step in?
I don't believe, I ran into her on Friday. I don't believe she's done it. She came to hunt up one of us for... to hunt up one of us or you, whatever, to say, we need to fill that spot. So I don't think she's taken the initiative on that.
Okay. All right. So let's, let me follow up with her. Sounds like we probably are at a point where we could do an advertising for that. So let's, let me get her and coordinate on that.
Thank you.
Anything else for additional business, gentlemen? Anybody at the table over there got anything to say they want to say? Yes, sir.
We all have a coat on right now.
Yeah.
I see a lot of people back there like this.
Thank you. Just take one moment of your time. Parcel 44 on Andrew Chapel, on the Andrew Chapel Road Project. We had previously established just compensation for this track at $1,485. We realized that we missed 230 square feet of concrete paving and a oak tree, so we want to adjust just compensation for this parcel to $3,914.70. And I'm asking to establish, to reestablish just compensation on this track.
Need a motion to add that?
Motion to add.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines to add it. Second, Mr. Morris, and all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morris, and any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cross.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. What you got, Mr. Slay? Anything else?
I don't know anything else. I don't have a need for a second, second.
Wow, that's a first.
Anything else, gentlemen? I entertain a message to recess until January 15th at 9:00 a.m. by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank y'all.
Something, something bad.
Charlie, good seeing you, man.
Thirty-five minutes.
What do we do with this?
Just those nine.
Does it have a house?
House or car or.
How's it work?
Just, extra batteries?
Hey, Dwayne, cut through Pearson. I don't know what he's gonna do now. He's gotta be, it looks like he piled it up the burner. I mean, you see, it's a pile of rubble.
He hit it. He was doing it, he was trying to, he borrowed his truck. And he run into the back, and the back wheels popped out and got stuck. And just about the time he hit him, pulled man's back.